A bunch of little desks and furniture and stuff that hasn't been used for years. It's been taking up space here.
My question is, what's the disposition on this furniture?
Depending on, well, the furniture, we haven't, unless it was already dilapidated, we took back to the burial pile. But most of it, a lot of it went to the public works facility in different places. For some of the old desks, I've got metal desks that sat there, that type of thing.
They can utilize them there.
Yeah.
So how do you know I'm getting rid of the surplus stuff besides hauling it to the dump?
Those computers, there was probably, what, thirty? At least thirty computers upstairs that are back from when I was here before.
I just got information from Josh, our IT guy. The school is taking donations for computers. We can pull hard drives out of them. They actually get credit by weight to purchase new computers for the school. So if there's old computers with Josh and Evan Reese, we can get all of those taken to them. And then the school will actually get credit to buy new computers.
Mr. Reese does a trip about, sometimes twice a year with old equipment, picks it up to Portland and then gets reimbursed for it.
I've got half a dozen of them at my office, too. I'd like to send them. No, no, they won't take CRT monitors, but other than that, they'll take keyboards, mouse, printers, faxes, I mean, any electronics that we want to get rid of, we can take to the school and they actually get a benefit from that.
And we'll probably have a few more, but right now, I mean, we had it at A Pike.
I think that, if you can talk to Josh, I don't know him, but I know you can talk to Evan.
Okay.
That's Greece at the high school.
Okay. Okay, so do I hear a motion on Resolution 893?
I move we approve the resolution number 893 on the matter of declaring surplus property.
Your second?
I'll say who's second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Next one is a change order for Head Start on the CDVG grant. They want to increase thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ten cents.
Do they have that money?
Yes.
Okay. Because every time we look at this, I'm thinking, well, there's only some which you can do if Vicky's giving money through old pop cans.
Now, this was part of the construction contingency.
But some of the work we added in, remember the last change order?
Yeah.
They received some Ford family funding. She also had some other funding, I can't remember what it was now.
She's in a better place now financially.
She's in a better place financially, yeah.
And this also includes the extension of the date for project completion from the twenty-first of January, which already passed, till April. And that allows time to do the outside, some, hopefully.
To do the paving.
Yeah.
Okay. So has there an addition been to this? I plan, I have to say that I missed out on the last item we had.
We had change order number one, which increased...
It increased the square footage of the building?
No.
No.
Change order one, the original bid, when we awarded it, was over the budget. So we, we cut quite a few things out and made some changes to the building. And there was a couple of side work things we cut out. One was curbs, sidewalks, and then when Head Start got some more funding, we put those back in. That was change order one.
Okay. Have I noticed around here, there's like nine thousand dollars for two-hour drive off. How could we miss that on the initial bid?
Well, it wasn't on the initial bid. When the plan review came back from building codes, the building is an E occupancy for education. So it's got two classrooms, a kitchen, and there's a conference room and teacher's work area. The code did have a footnote in it, the plan reviewer found it. If the auxiliary uses, which were all the other offices, were in the, were more than eighty percent of the building space, which they were, because education was only with the two classrooms, then that had to be a firewall separation between the classrooms and the other occupancy. So we had to add that. When we added that, we put additional trusses over those walls, so we could sheets, we had to sheet it clear up to the roof, to the roof deck. That added the fire dampers and heating and air conditioning ducts through the wall. And it also added the doors, the doors into the hallways that go into the classroom areas. Those had to be ninety-minute rated. And you see the last one rearranged pipes in the bathroom walls, and we put that extra layer of five-eighths sheetrock on the walls, it screwed up the accessibility requirement.
So it was your recommendation to approve this, which we have. Was Jeff Marshall asked about this deletion of installing the meter?
No, what happened on that is Head Start came to us and wanted to know about getting the meters put in and stuff. And so we had her pay us. And it should have gone through the project. And that was my error, where it should have come through the project because it was already in the project. And that's, anyway, so the contractor, we reduced that from hands, right?
Yeah, he was supposed to, he was supposed to buy the meters and install it. Somehow in the process, the town furnished the meters, Head Start paid the town for the hookup fees. And so I deleted it. That's that item that deletes it out of the contractor's contract. I don't want to pay for it twice.
But it was in the initial...
Yes.
And then from this, I'm trying to remember what I saw, there's at least some remaining money, am I right then, for potential change orders that may take place?
Yeah, there's, yeah, the construction contingency has some more money in it. Another, I don't have the budget, another twenty thousand dollars I'd save.
The correction on mine says twenty-nine, one-twenty-three.
Okay, I see. I just...
Do you anticipate more change orders? Because, I mean, I worked with the town as a liaison when we were putting the streetscape in, and change orders were like flowing like people with Kleenex and having the flu.
Well, that was a different project.
But change orders do happen a lot.
You know, underground projects, we get into them quite a bit with our water sewer-type things. This is an above-ground project. We could have some more, but I would think there would be some things that Head Start wants to do, you know. We took all the playground landscaping and things out. They may want to add some of that back in if they can. There's been some talk about some gutters on the building. But as far as the building footprint, there shouldn't be anything else unless we want to add, unless they want to add something. The side work is pretty much completed, except the rest of the walks and the paving. The underground is done. So I don't anticipate any more unless they want to add something else in, if they could, if they want.
Well, at that point, they will, I would assume they'll know whether or not they have the funds to do that.
With the way that it's structured through the CDVG type atmosphere, it's up to them to make sure they stay within that...
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't, we can't, I mean, that's, well, we can amend it and shove stuff around in there, but we can't, we can't increase that budget. So that's why we... Have to work with those change orders.
Well, and that's another reason that I always do a resolution and have the council involved with the change orders.
That way you know exactly what's happening.
There's no question.
And it's entered down through, since it's a CDVG grant, so.
So I don't want to take...
Pretty highly scrutinized when you're working with the federal government like that.
I know.
I move that we approve Resolution number 894 on the matter of the CDVG grant, Head Start change order number two.
I hear a second?
I'll say one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the Fair Housing, supportive assisted housing programs.
Basically, that's updating pretty much something that was already done. In order to get the CDVG funding and different grants, you have to have a fair housing resolution. But we had to update this as per SCOED, that is, our grant administrator, and they drafted this resolution for us to adopt.
So it's something we've had, but this is the most recent?
Right, it's more of an update on it.
Okay.
And this is Resolution eight?
Eight ninety-five.
Make a motion to approve Resolution eight ninety-five on the supportive assisted housing programs.
Your second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This is section eight ninety-six.
Okay, the last one. This one...
I need a little explanation on this.
Yeah, I just...
Ask the questions.
This is, I'll remind the council that this is one of our items that we sent to the legislature that was very important, if you'll recall.
That's right.
It was one to be discussed, and it was going to be something of focal point, so the state didn't take action on it, and that's...
And that's what this is, is making sure that, you know, we're supporting what the legislature is doing, because that's a huge one, to get our recreational immunity back.
Right, it's recreational immunity property on us.
Right.
Does it give to the town, like, itself?
Right, any property that we have, right. But, you know, most of, it really started with the park. I don't know if you remember, or if you were told about that. There was a lady running in Portland, and she was blind. And she obviously had somebody with her. Public Works had been called out earlier that day to do some repairs, or the day before. And then they got a call away, and they had coned it, but during the night, or whatever, somebody removed that cone and placed it elsewhere. So she fell and broke her ankle, or whatever she did. And that's how this started, is because then, you know, they came back on the town and, you know, sued the town and sued the worker because that, the markings were removed. And so that's kind of the background history of that, so this is... Yeah, and so they kind of took that away from us, so that as an individual worker, such as Travis, or Jeff, or one of our workers, could also be sued, because in the past, that wasn't the way. And so by having this recreational immunity back in play, you know, they're protected, we would still protect them to the end, but, you know, you have somebody that loses everything because of not their nibble, but something. So, and what we've encouraged for everybody is to take pictures, take pictures. When you leave a site, take a picture, so that, you know, it shows your signs are up and it was properly done. That's, you know, really important. But hopefully, the legislature can get that back passed and back in effect.
I think the fourth paragraph down, is that more or less the summation of it, or I'm just looking for it easy? Broadly intended to extend this immunity from liability to apply not only to landowners, but also to the landowners, employees, agents, and volunteers, so that...
It's kind of scary.
So did CIS also document as the LOC?
Yeah, or ALC. And actually, they, they sent it and suggested they get on there. Yep, and they are the ones that drafted it, so.
This is Resolution eight ninety-six.
I would move that we approve Resolution number eight ninety-six on the matter of recommending restoring the recreational immunity.
Your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Irish Days Street Closure, the next one. Now, have you seen this, Travis? Okay.
I have not.
From what I see here, they start at the Chamber Office, go down to North Third, basically make the same route that they do for the parade, except they'll come up South First Street and back on the E Street. This is for the parade, also, that's a parade route. And then this is their street closure.
Starting at the town parking lot, is that what they're starting?
Yeah.
So the same sort of what we normally do, they line up on D Street, they go around. Have they got an ODOT permit, do we know?
I don't know yet, I haven't checked with Brianna on that.
Okay.
But I will. Well, it says permits are pending to...
They haven't brought anything to me, and normally I have to sign that before it goes to ODOT, and I haven't seen it yet, so.
Okay.
And maybe, because Brianna's pretty new, there may be a gap, so we might want to make sure that she knows.
Yeah, Marcy should know all that, too. But we'll get with them.
So we need to make a motion on this? And if so, can we please just make it on contingency upon them getting their permits to go on?
Profit of risk and insurance.
If that's what we recommend, I make that motion.
Yeah.
And then we get with them as quick as possible to make sure it happens on time.
I will go see, I will see Brianna tomorrow.
I've got a second. I'll make a contingency, I think, yeah.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While we're on Irish Days, Darwin, were you the one who set up the basketball competition last year? Or did you work with that?
Josh Gabriel, I think, probably had something to do with that. I know Junior and I have been talking a little bit about, you know, kind of taking over for what Josh was running during some of those.
I think that would be, that was really a popular thing. It brought a lot of kids together to do that, as well as some adults, and I think it was a fun time. What did they do it? They had a, well, you can better...
Yeah, so, you know, they ran like a three-on-three tournament and other activities. During the summers, when part of that happened, I can't remember what all happened during Irish Days. I wasn't here, and I won't be here during Irish Days each time, because there were less than tournaments that the kids do, so. The one that happened during the summer, when they also asked to rent the pool out, and then we had our current DA, who at that time was volunteering to help pay for that. So I know some of the money that Josh Gabriel got was in donations, and there was a hoop purchased and stuff like that, so it needs to be stored somewhere. So that's something I can't store at my place, but I'm looking for a place to store it. I don't know if it's anywhere here, but it was played right out in front here, so I don't know, when we close the street for that.
So that it was right here?
No. Yeah, some of it was there, but the one in the summer was played right here.
I see she's got North D and...
Didn't they do it up there by Huffsteads?
Wonder if that's where they went?
Yeah, that's where I thought it was.
Yes, one time it was on Huffsteads, but there were...
I thought Irish Days at least was up there.
Yeah, either up on D or Huffsteads.
That keeps them out of the real traffic area that are up there.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to block D Street up there.
Oh, it is, yeah, it's not really a section, it's between the two.
Yeah.
So I'm more than happy to help with it. During Irish Days, I won't be in town, so that's a no-go for me, but I can get, you know, hoop, you know.
And if there's one that needs to...
What is the name of the last, yeah, Pastor Nate, I wonder if he would be...
Yeah, there might be, I'll talk to some of the guys and see what happens.
Okay, check with him, because he might be willing to take that on, and he's very, very close to a lot of the high school kids. He's done a lot of substituting, he's worked with the basketball program, so he'd be a really good choice, I think.
Darwin, if there's need for storage of a basketball hoop, we might be able to talk to Charter, or not Charter, but CenturyLink, in that big warehouse they have right there. They, they may allow us to store stuff there, and it would be in the right vicinity for when we need it to.
Next one is a waiver discussion for air quality.
I was contacted by SCOED, and they do the wood stove change out. And the two people listed here need a new stove in order to, you know, for our air quality program, and because they've got pretty bad heating, as it explains in here, they're using dishevers and, so anyway, they wanted to know if the town would allow two residents to have those old, you know, wood stove heating. And I said, I told them I would bring it to you, but I also want to bring up the fact that with our discussions with the EPA and DEQ on our air quality, we are so close to not, or being, becoming a non-attainment town, such as Clamath Falls, and a non-attainment town or city, EPA rules what we do. We no longer have the say whether they can burn or not. And so we have been really trying to stay in compliance. Don checks the numbers every day. We have a meter down on Third and M that, you know, tells how many particulate stoves in the air. And if we allow two, then does that, you know, I mean, is...
Everybody else is going to ask you, will you allow them? Why can't we do that?
And does that put us over if, you know, because two, two or three could. I mean, I don't know. And is it worth risking and becoming a non-attainment town where EPA is telling us exactly when we can?
Yeah, we're already walking free thing around. The EPA is, as it is, okay, so that would be agreement that we worked out with the second round of air quality, involving Sally, so.
So, so do we have the address for Conning Coons on this?
I don't have it right off. We can get it for you, but...
I remember Conning's been on, like, U Street or something like that, and I'm not sure if it's the same, but the, the second one, from my understanding, that's not in the city limits. It's in urban boundary.
Yeah, but, and I'm wondering if the other is in...
And I don't think the other one is in city limits either.
Ten forty-three South G is not city limits.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's on south...
By the fairgrounds, that is.
Yeah, by the fairgrounds, that is not, that's not...
It's in our town, but it's a county's.
And I know the urban growth, you know, the wood stove, you know, and air quality does include the urban growth boundary, but...
That the approval would have to come from the county.
Or both, both would have to.
And I, I don't think that we should shift from as tight a wire as we're walking with the EPA and the DEQ. I don't think we should even set a precedent, because that's what it does, and that request pretty much blows the program.
Yeah, I don't know about any of you, but I've been hit, I don't know how many times about burning and stuff, and what are we going to do about it? And I said, hey, our hands are tied, you know?
And at least we allow them to burn, because if we get under that EPA, where they're telling us what we can, I mean, absolutely. You know, we might not have any wood stoves.
Along with our industrial segment separating.
So the problem, and I agree with the urban growth boundaries are out of the town limits, but people, when, when West Side is burning all their wood stoves out there, where does that come in?
Yeah.
Right in here? All the way down to New Pine Creek, all the way, people that live up that south into town, it funnels right in here to us. So, I don't know that we can afford to do this for many different reasons, but I also think you have to be very cognizant of the fact that those areas in the county that are surrounding our town, that's where a lot of our stuff comes from. So we have to be a little careful with that, and a little, you know, forward-thinking about, well, we could do something at least to help somebody stop the wood burning. I have to tell you, it's been a bad winter for people who have just wood stoves. I've seen innumerable ads on For Sale Lakeview and some other social media sites, anybody have wood for sale, real wood for sale, and, you know, over and over again. So it's, it's a nice time for us to come in and say, you know, you don't want another winter like this with your wood stove. Anyway, I don't know whether that helps us with this or not, but those are my concerns.
So, so help me understand this exactly right.
Okay.
We've got, we've got two customers who are working through SCOED to get this funding, and neither of which have, it seems like, the means or the capability to do anything other than wood stove, other than, you know, for this one manufactured home, there's, you know, a furnace, an electrical furnace that could use some updating and fixing. And then the other one, there's certainly some weatherization problems going on, which, you know, is what it is. So from how I understand this program to work, is that, you know, it kind of morphed on us. I mean, originally, it was wood change out, wood stove change out, and we had the ability to change a wood stove for a wood stove for a certified wood stove. And then the program changed with the funding of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand to going away from wood stoves completely, which didn't, which I was absolutely against, I'm still against, because it doesn't make sense when we don't have inversions for people not to be able to burn wood, when it's the cheapest source available. You know, there was a huge spike, and I'm sure, I'm surprised more people are complaining about what happened down in Medford and other areas with some of the power that was, you know, bills and skyrocketing.
There's been a lot.
And I know it's happened locally, and everybody's seen it on Facebook if you're there. But continue to go to, you know, these other sources that historically haven't been used by, you know, people in this community, and yet, you know, EPA will continue to push their agenda, sorry to get on the soapbox, but, you know, wood stove is historically what people have done here, and, which I absolutely enjoy, you know, other than obviously when it's pretty, pretty strong because of inversion. But we know what the law is around red days, but other days, and yellow days as well. But I, I see no reason why, when we've got funding and we're not spending that money, why we're not allowing people to, you know, have something that historically has been what they've used in these two homes, just replace it for something that's certified, which is according to best practices, something that works and is, is, you know. Now, obviously, people should be using space heaters or some other source during the red days, but, you know, going, these caps were put in place, and obviously, we, you know, shades limitations with what he can do, then, then he can't get to all places that need to, so we've got competitors coming from Clamath, paying, and they're kind of spending a lot of money, in my opinion, that should have been kept locally to be spent, and more contractors could have, you know, showed up. I mean, that's a lot, a lot of money to be spent. But try to, try to keep this short now, but I kind of grabbed it too much. I, I just think that we, the money should be getting spent, and I have no problem with wood stove, other than if it's on a red day when we're cutting inversion.
But I think that, that what, what the problem with the, the grants has been, and they redefine the way that the grants were implemented here, a little out here, and it's all allocated by the legislature. And so we can't change those grants. I think it would be nice if we could, because I think there's, you know, if you went out and bought everybody that had a wood stove, a system, I know we wouldn't spend as much as is allocated for Lake County. Our monies end up getting funneled elsewhere, always, at the end of the season. You didn't use them, have luck. And so we've still got the same thing. So if the legislature could see fit at some point to say, okay, what, what is given to like these days in Lake York, Lake County, whatever, and we actually spent monies on homes such as these and helped people, probably we wouldn't have an air quality situation in our town. But the legislature does, you know, that's who governs those funds.
Well, and if we have...
No, that's fine.
But if EPA comes in... But if EPA comes in, we're.
Yeah, and so I'm not, I'm not suggesting at all that we go away from, I just wanted to make sure that, from the funding source, that this is not available, because if it's not available, then, then that's simple, but if we went above and beyond.
So they, they know exactly what the funding source will allow, and that's why they're coming to us, because these two exclusions are waivers from those sources, to see if we can, I mean, they're asking for a waiver from that, so, once, once the waiver is, is granted, we set up the precedence in our community for everybody that doesn't want to change out, and come in line with what is dictated to us by the federal and the state environmental protection agencies to fall in line, so I, I've talked enough about it.
Well, I guess maybe I just mentioned that this came from SCOED, and it was called.
The problem, that mild or low.
Yeah, they're, they're asking, yeah, they're asking for a waiver from what we, we are able to do through the state, and so, that's.
So what, what are our choices here?
Well, not to put the waiver.
And tell the people you can't burn on red days.
So why, why are they even bringing this to us if they know that we can't provide a waiver?
And that's what, you know.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
No, because they're.
Because this is coming from the state.
Yeah.
Who should know better than to try to put us into a situation where we're agreeing to something that is not legally allowed to agree to.
Yeah, and nobody's going to say, oh, yeah, it was that, you know.
But that's why I want, I think we need to read a little bit more possibly, without saying no right away, because if, if we put ourselves into a higher standard where people are only allowed to go to this new source, which really only sees some changes providing, Shay wasn't, you know, wasn't wanting to be a real part of a lot of that, and I don't need to speak for Shay, but, you know, he comes into the office at the courthouse, I know that, but, you know, we've, we've, I mean, I, I remember hearing numbers from before, when we'd already had the money for almost over a year, and it was like.
I don't know, not much about that.
Yeah, and it's like, and we'd only really serviced like eight families, and, and how, why are we getting $750,000 if we're not even getting this money spent, and I'm not sure what's left?
But that wasn't just for Lakeview, was it? It was Lake and Clamath.
No, there's, there's, no, there's a certain amount that Lakeview had, or Lake County had, Clamath, and so when we use our funds, we'll climate suck them back in, and they were used elsewhere, and this is what happens, and it's happened now twice.
And I think we should use it, but I think we ought to know that, that they come in with, within the parameters of the guidelines that are set for it, and to offer a waiver so that these people can burn wood in spite of the fact that they.
Non-qualified.
So, so no one's giving them a waiver on a red day, that's not what we're talking about, you know, the red day is absolutely nobody's permit, but on, but is.
They're asking for a waiver to allow these people to continue to burn.
Okay, well, that's, that, I mean, that seems like a no, but how many red days have we had? I mean, we haven't had a whole lot of red days this year.
And I can't imagine that the, this must not.
Three days. Since I've been on.
Right, and that's what I mean.
How many?
Three. We've had those two inversions come in for, because I keep getting a substantial weather warning.
Well, but the wind was our savior in some of that.
And in mild winters like we had last year, there was like, I don't know, one or two, I mean, it wasn't that many as well, and so we, we must have been below the standard last year.
And there was probably three days where I couldn't get into the system because they, our service was down on M Street, and when that system is down, I can't get in to look to see what the weather.
So I just think we just need to look at, you know, this program and actually where these monies are allowed to go, and, and what it can actually buy again, because if there's a pretty hefty balance, and it's been sitting there for almost two years, and we're just not getting this money spent, and it's getting soaked up in overhead, that's wrong.
Now, this is the second round, the first round's already gone.
Well, that was like four years ago, though, I mean, we're talking about.
They finally got the, the set guidelines, but.
Is there any way that they could use the pellet stoves? Because they burn a whole lot.
They still, they still have an emission.
Yeah, but I think, you know, the, the. Ballast stoves are exempt, I think.
I think they are on red days.
Because that's what they, that's what they put in my house, and they said, red days didn't matter anymore because the emissions.
But that, that was probably before the recent changes in the, in the DEQ, new guidelines, and the EPA set up new guidelines.
The DEQ will change every.
It's better, but it's not, or good enough on a red day, you know?
That, because like Darwin said, the wood stoves used to be fine, you could just upgrade to a compliant wood stove.
Right.
So, so all you're asking is a waiver. So you'd be able to burn them on a red day, both of your wood stoves.
But they don't give you monies for that anymore, so you have to get an alternative source now, that's what it's.
The other thing that they do, that a lot of people don't realize is when you put in a wood stove, the property owner or owner could give paint such a portion.
Yeah, you still.
It's not gravy, it's.
Well, I, I think it would come up with a plan.
Well, perhaps the town should, should do it. Open up negotiations with the state on it and see, because I, this is headlined with some state email addresses, and I don't know if Mary Baker or Robert Delmer from the state of Oregon are with the DEQ, but I can't imagine them allowing this to be sent when they know their guidelines.
Well, and Mary Baker is with Business Oregon, she's with our.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with environmental quality, so, okay.
But I will just follow up, just to see what I can.
I don't think we're ready to say, to change anything, as of now, they're not supposed to burn on red days.
Yeah.
So we'll table this, give them that meeting, can we find out more information, or?
Find out if there's another way to go, and stay looking at the parameters of the grants.
Okay.
Financially and.
Oh, one thing, Dawn was on a conference call the other day, and she may want to update you on it.
So on the red days, you absolutely cannot burn, it doesn't matter if your stove is certified, it doesn't matter if you're low income, it does not matter, they absolutely forbid you to burn. Yellow days, the only ones that can burn are the low-income people with the certified stove, and that's exactly what I was told. So, basically, anybody else can burn on a green day, but only those with the low income, and I have to have a copy of what their income is every month, because I have to have proof of that.
And that is what the town's set with the low income, wait, that's, that's our.
But now there's no exemptions whatsoever, none.
Well, I'm not, I can't, I can't see jeopardizing ourselves any further than what we already are with DEQ, so we'll just.
So do you want me to follow up? Do you want to not make a change?
I want, I think you just need to, to get into contact with the people who ask for this and say, we cannot grant a waiver on this because of our precarious position with the neighborhood, and what we would encourage you to do is to find some, some rational way of making sure these people can be worn without going over the costs that we're providing.
Got a name and phone number here in Clamath to call.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and this other one said that because there were children in the house, that would be Oregon Human Development Corp. might be able to help out too, I wonder if they've checked that out.
It looks as though a bunch of state agencies are trying to help these families, and I'm sure they are indeed, and, and I, I wish we could help them, but our hands are pretty much tied as far as the town looked like they've been, and been able to, EPA out of the situation.
Or if they grant to EPA is going to, you know, adjust that flat chance.
I think it's pretty clear in the group, and I'm not speaking for all of you, but we don't give waivers for red days, that's absolutely not in our best interest, and it totally goes against what, you know, agreements we've got in place as, as trying to be, you know, in attainment.
And I have to say, when I have drove around on the red days that I did, I, we did good this year, people really were very considerate this year towards the burning on the red days, so.
Okay, let's go on to the next one. Point one, Town Manager Budget Officer, I thought you already were a budget officer.
This is something we technically have to do every year.
Oh.
Make motion to approve a convert renewal as budget officer.
I'll second that.
All in favor, everybody?
It's not a job anybody else was when the red.
I'll share.
Yeah, well, I'll listen to your point about it, but I, that's not a line I'm sure.
Okay, MC Chuck Wagon update.
Basically, I, I put this in your packet, I have been working with the people that own the MC Chuck Wagon, and there were some current concerns addressed, because last year we had Delbert, who was keeping up the maintenance and different things, and we are not sure he's coming back this year, because he had an injury, and so we were talking about it, and, you know, for what they want, it's going to take more than just a couple, couple hours a week, they want it very well-maintained, very meticulous, and they ended up hiring a, a company to do their, their weeds and, and are going to take care of it, and Bev, what is it, Gilz, Gilz, yeah, she's going to do kind of oversight of it, go in and monitor it also, and Will Cahill is still going to bring the kids from Edale, where pays the, the 4H kids down, to let her, you know, get the letter in, keep it in order, but I just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on what we had talked about, give you a copy of the minutes, and then I will be on their board of directors, replacing Ray Sims, and so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just.
So, they, they didn't actually replace that window that got broken yet?
We did replace it, there's still, and I was going to talk to Jeff, and I forgot today, I mentioned it last week, there's some white spackling from when they put it back in that needs to be painted, and they were supposed to finish that up, and then a couple times a year, you know, at least once a year in the spring, we'll have the fire department, you can do it outside the spring, get in the building presentable, if it needs it again, we can do that too.
So, this part B there, where it says they have, they would immediately replace the town of Lakeview as the designated asset manager, is that where they're going to be hiring Herrera?
Yeah, they, they did that, and hired that.
His costs.
But, you know, if you have somebody that is just personally involved with it, and I think that'll make a difference, so.
That's a great asset for our community to have that.
And then hopefully in April, May, beginning, we're going to try to do a, put that light pole up that they wanted, or light pole, and the power company will be here to do a presentation, and I'll have Ray Sims, who is really involved with this, be here, so, probably be in April, May sometime, and maybe it might be around a festivity too, you know, like during the week, but anyway, we're going to do that, so.
Appreciate the update on it.
I know, I've seen a lot of people stop by there.
Oh, absolutely, it is, people do stop by.
Okay, next on there is the LRC bulletin, I went to, went to training supposedly, they got canceled on the 2nd of February.
So, okay.
Yeah, I was already up there.
They are going to have it again in April, so, you know, I don't know the exact date that they just saw that.
Well, they have a lack of participation, or?
That's what they said, because of the roads and weather.
Okay.
Oh, I'll tell you, Redmond Bend downtown, we were in Four High, and between the towns, it was bare pavement, all the way from La Pine to Lakeview was bare pavement, but just downtown, both cities, it was terrible, it was bad.
And I don't know if you want to continue these in your packet, or you just want me to email them to you, I did, I emailed them also, so it gives you a time to, you know, connect to a link if they have something, but it's informative, information, so I think it's a good idea, at least that you get them, so either way you want them is fine, or both, I don't care, it's, it's okay. My car name's not on that server.
No, I see that.
Don't look too hard, Ray, but there's, I, I still have an opportunity to do that, I tried to get on today, but I couldn't because of our computer system couldn't get on the internet, so I don't know what's going on, but.
Okay. Oh.
Did I forget to put cancel, we're not having an exception.
I was going to say, I don't.
I might have forgot to put cancel time, sorry, please.
Nope.
You can still have cancel time.
Anybody have anything else? Nothing? Okay, meeting will be adjourned at 5:12.